Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. It's Monday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three Ross Board of Education work session. Mrs. Logan, could you please call the role, please?
Mrs. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfeldter?
Present.
Mr. Schnell?
Here.
And Mr. Van Winkle.
Dr. Cuckel, the floor is yours.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Two presentations tonight. First is Mr. Martin, and he has some guests with him tonight. And then Mr. Beck with our winter athletics update. So Mr. Martin, floor is yours.
Testing, testing. All right. All right. Thank you for having us this evening. Don't get too comfortable because this this presentation involves some a field trip. So we're going to be moving throughout the building. I don't know if that violates any any rules or whatever, but that's that's our plan for this evening. So here to talk a little bit about our visual arts program here at the high school. We get a lot of publicity for our performing arts program, our Ross band of class and our in our show choir and whatnot. But probably the program that flies underneath the radar a little bit is our visual arts program. And the reality is that they contribute every bit as much to our school climate and culture as any other program. In fact, you may be surprised to know that there are about one hundred and fifty more high school students taking a visual art class than there are in our music program at the at the high school. So while music tends to get a lot of the headlines, we actually have almost forty-five percent of the student body taking at least one art course throughout the year this year. So it's my pleasure to introduce our two art teachers here at the high school, Mrs. Sarah Baker and Mrs. Joanna Lawson. And as I said, we're going to be taking a little bit of a field trip throughout the building to observe some of the things that they have done and brought to life and that our students have brought to life to improve the climate here at Ross High School.
All right. So yeah, when Mr. Martin asked if we would like to showcase some of the visual arts, first thing that jumped in my mind is we're going to have to show you guys the murals. Because the murals program here is a new program. We just started the class. This is our third year. And the kids are loving it. And it's the definitely the murals, it's murals and public art. And so public art is really popular in in culture right now. You're going to you find murals popping up in Hamilton and in Cincinnati with artworks and in all major cities around the world, basically, there's huge following. So I think the kids are seeing more of that on social media and seeing a lot of what's been done. And like I said, in Hamilton itself, the program Street Spark there, they have done a lot of murals in the last couple of years. And it's actually a program that I actually had to paint one of the murals with Street Spark a couple summers ago. And you have to be eighteen, but once the kids graduate, they could actually apply and be a mural painter. So it's really cool to see that within our own our community. It's something that they can relate to. Something that they can further if they're interested in doing. So we're going to take a walk. I know we only have fifteen minutes and we have a lot to show you. So we're going to we're going to head out. We'll go out this way?
Yeah.
We'll just head out this way. That are one of the the boys and one in the girls restroom. This one, it was done, our first murals class was in twenty and twenty twenty-one. So they painted this one with their masks on. A group of boys came up with this design and it's our graffiti mural. So you guys peek in here and see our Rams graffiti. And then the girls restroom, of course, they were jealous that the boys had a mural and the girls didn't. So this year they came up with a design and they painted this one. So this one's actually not a hundred percent finished. They're still working on some of the vines. If you pop in there, there's some things around the corner, too. I don't think anybody's in there, so I think you can go in if you want to. And then there another one that's in progress is actually in the student services. You can see it through the windows. It's got it still has tape on it and is half painted. They're doing kind of an abstract mountainscape where the first side has like warm colors and the backside has cool colors. So it's kind of like night and day. So they'll have a moon on one side and the sun on the other side. And they worked with the counselors on that idea and kind of had a couple of things that they proposed and the counselors liked that one. If you guys have any questions, let me know. I'm going to go fast because there's a lot to show you. We have fourteen murals that are either in progress or finished in three years. So this one is the big one. This one was done the first year as well. So at the same time that these guys were painting the the plant wall, they were painting the the boys restroom. So one group was in there, another group was out here. And I have a few pictures in my room when we when we end there of them in progress. You can kind of see how they kind of came together. So this we call the plant mural. And then the one over here used to have something underneath it that they had started and we ended up painting over that. It was a tree, but it was a different tree. But we came up with this idea this year and all the fingerprints on here are different students and staff members. So we are about a third of the way through the students and staff. It was hard to kind of judge. It's one of those where you have like, it's kind of like picking a number of how many marbles are in the jar. Right? You're like, you have no idea. I was like, how many students and how many, what's that going to look like visually on how many dots for the leaves? So we're still, we're about a third of the way through. We'll see what that one ends up looking like. So it's our way of kind of incorporating, you know, letting everybody put their hand literally on the wall here at the high school. So they finger. All right, we're going to head this way. Does have any questions? All right. So as we're walking, the process, the kids, these are all their designs. Okay, so these are not my designs. These are the kids come up with the designs. They have to be site specific, so they have to have a place in the school in mind and then tell me what they're going to put on the wall. So we start with those ideas and then they vote on them. So as a group, they critique them, they they get offer feedback and they vote on which ones they want to pursue. And then we take them to Mr. Martin for approval. So I'm sorry that this is so dark. So this is what we call, this is our English mural. So the English hallway. This one was done last year, this side, and this one has been is still in progress. There's some things that they're still finishing up on this side. So this is all subject matter that comes from the books that they read here at the high school. So the English teachers gave them feedback on what what they wanted to see on the wall and the combinations. So there are nine different books, ten, ten different books represented on this wall. So that should be like a quiz and see if anybody can find which one, right? I bet I bet you can find it. You can probably know this one if you've ever read that, because that's the title of the book. But so the Odyssey. Yep, Great Gatsby, Romeo and Juliet, Caged Bird. Fahrenheit four fifty-one is the birdie books. The crucible is the cauldron. Yay, thank you. So yeah, so they're finishing this one up. So this one and then we'll we'll see one in the math hallway, we'll see one in the history hallway. You'll note, we we got input from the teachers. So they had these ideas and then they would talk to the teachers that were that subject matter to see kind of what they wanted to see on the walls. So they are, but like I said, they're all designed by the students. So I did not draw them up. They did that and then they gave each other feedback and and then worked together to then put them on the wall. All right. So we're going back this way, upstairs. I say that's because I have to monitor you guys painting here, you guys painting there, you guys painting with it. So this is our math mural and it's kind of shiny. So you kind of have to come come see it this way. It's got some metallic paint on this one. And the funny thing on this one is when we painted it, we had, they were working on this and working on this and working on it. It took a really long time to us for us to realize that initially they only had one stand success. I approved it. Mr. Martin saw it. You know, like how many people it went through and nobody caught it, right?
You're not supposed to tell that.
It's kind of comical, but. So again, math subject matter, you've got the ram and then you've got the the quote and the math. Yeah, some geometry, some numbers, some things. So this was a design, a student. They did this last year and she was a freshman. She was the only freshman in my murals class and she's excellent. It's Emma Howell. You always know Emma. She's amazing in everything she does. But she drew this value. And they painted this quick, too. This was the fastest one. Great job. So I don't know. I imagine that we might expand somewhere. We've got lots of wall space up here yet. Yes. So this one, expand, obviously, this whole thing is up there. We call the science mural. And it was all started the first year. So it started three years ago. And then they worked on it last year and we haven't worked on it this year yet, but we may do a few things to it. There are some areas that still are unfinished. So so we'll see. It's a big mural. It's a big mural. The original design was pretty much nothing like this. It was, this is the one that did evolve over time. Lots of different people had their hands in it. But I think that part of that is for them to know that, yes, yes, we're leaving it here. This is something that is is going to be up for a long time. But at the same time, there's no promises that we're not going to make changes to it. And it's yes, they have ownership of their work, but not so much that they're that they should be upset if somebody comes in and says, oh, we're going to add something over here. Right? It's it's a collaborative work. And I go in and teach them that this is teamwork. This is collaborative work. This is not individual work. So you kind of have to set your your own opinions aside sometimes and go with what's best for the group. So it's kind of nice to have this one as a good example where we've added a lot to it and made changes to it over a period of three years. So lots of stuff down here. You can see all the science connection. We've got, you know, earth science and anatomy and physics and chemistry and astronomy. Do you teach astronomy? All kinds of stuff.
Hostility. Oh, yes, yes.
So right now?
We 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 went through it many times. There's, well, there was my Mr. Will, I'm sure. You know, they gave, he gave more.
All right. So the history mural, the history mural. And one thing that I wanted to talk about, too, is there's, you'll notice, you know, lots of scuff marks. Part of the challenge is with this paint, the paint that is on the walls, the beige paint, I was told was an anti-anti graffiti paint, right? It's a paint that is made to not put things on top of, right? So so that does make it challenging for us because we do easily get scuffs on the on the paint. And there's a lot of areas that we touched up and then we have to go back and, which is another great thing. I I think that it's, there's, you know, always that like rainbow, you know, the the particle at the end of the rainbow there where we're like enjoying a mural, but eventually they're going to look rough enough that we're going to have to do something on top of it. So it's kind of like the commitment of, yeah, it'll be here for a while, but we're probably going to end up doing something else. Because I don't have every color. Black I have. But I don't have every color to go touch everything up all the time. So eventually we'll have to, it'll get scuffed up and we'll have to put something over top. But again, I think that that's a good thing. I don't think that's a bad shirt. Rotating, won't get stale on the wall. All right. This one is actually the first mural that we did for the murals class. So this was done in twenty twenty-one with my first group. And this one, I gave them the love silhouette. This is actually taken from another mural. They've got it. There's a couple of them that are like this in in a couple of cities. Can't remember exactly which one it is now. But just that, and then they have a different background. But I thought to get them started, as we're, you know, getting like, what do we want to do? I said, okay, I printed out a page that had all this and then they had to design a background. So all every student designed a different background and they were very different from each other. And then we voted on which background it was going to be. So it kind of got them started on thinking creatively without having to come up with something completely off the top of their head that that was new. And a lot of people love this one. Unintended. All right. So we painted this one in my drawing and painting class before the murals class existed. So this is my design. This is the only one that the students did did not design. So I designed this one because they wanted to paint the wall. It was it was kind of an extra thing that we did at the end of the year. So this one has been here, I can't remember the year. I think it was seventeen, maybe. Is that so about, right?
Down here, so when was that?
Yeah, it's been a while. It's been a while. So I'm just saying.
Eighteen, maybe.
Okay, so yeah, it's been six or seven years. So it's held up pretty well, pretty well for a few scratches and things. But this kind of started the trend where we said, hey, we could do more of this. Students really loved it. We got great feedback. So we decided to expand. All right. So there's a couple other ones that are unfinished down there, but we're going to go ahead and because we're over our time. We're going to jump into the art room so Joanna can talk about our ceramics. So only thing, I do want to say, one thing that I found, I was looking at some stuff for for murals and I found this quote that a different art teacher had said, and I thought it was really cool. It said, he said, "A school willing to give students the chance to decorate their academic space with their own collaborative artwork is a school nourishing positive community culture." And I really just thought that was like, yep, that is true because the kids, this is their space. And when they get to be a part of what goes up on the wall, I mean, some of the kids I have in class, I'll overhear them talking to students as they walk by and they just have, they're so proud of the work they're doing. They're so excited to show it off. And I I just think that that positivity and that that is exactly what we want. So I think this is a great program and I think it's going to grow. So thank you. All right. Let's jump in here.
All right. So I teach ceramics one and two primarily. That's kind of the popular class that's growing very quickly for us, that the kids are really, really excited about. So I do have some work out here in the display case, but I have also some more in the classroom and I can kind of explain what the kids are learning and how we're going to expand that program. So we're right in here in three oh three.
So you haven't been, yeah, you haven't been in the art rooms. We have two art rooms. So my room is right over here by Mr. Kleinfeldter. And this one has become more of the ceramics room because it's grown so much. And our rooms are connected. We don't have, you know, three don't want to, you'd like.
All right. So this is kind of our, we call this our studio working space. Up against the windows here, very conveniently, I had a request from a student from the newspaper, I believe, doing an article on senior artwork. So very conveniently, I was had to put out all of my senior work. So here's all of my seniors, just selective work. These are the pieces that I have selected to be shown at the art show at Kons Art in May. So it shows a great variety of what they learned. Ceramics one, we start just with hand building. That's the primary primary focus. For the ceramics one course, we learn pinch methods, foil methods and the slab methods. And for high school, they are, I push them past what they think they can do with the size. So I will force them to make pots that are about eight to ten inches tall. You know, like they don't think they can achieve this in the time that they have. So it's really great to watch them reach a goal that they just thought impossible to begin with. So they have been doing a really, really great job. I have seen a lot of improvement as the program has gone through. And I've only been here the last two years for this program, so I'm really proud of them. So that would be like a coil pot. They make these pinch pots. This is an example of one where it's a double pinch pot and then they have to cut it in a really creative way to make a little vessel that they can keep. And then the slabs are just flat pieces of clay that they will put together into a unique vessel. We also teach them different surface treatments. So how can you decorate the surface, not just create something that is structurally sound? Ceramics two is going to be building upon that. They're going to continue working on their hand building skills. And then we introduce them to the wheel. So we have six wheels back here in the wheel room that you guys are more than welcome to check out. I'm actually getting ready to start the new quarter with a new group of kids. So because we've got the six wheels and there's a little bit more of a demand than just six students, right? So they are also asked to become very independent and very responsible for their learning. So they have to give me some project proposals for hand building projects that they're doing in the classroom while I'm showing them how to work the wheel and to create the three basic forms. They'll do cylinders, holes and plates and more if they have the time. So they're really excited about this. They get to be dirty and messy and they don't get yelled at unless they leave the mess for me, then they get yelled at. But this has been a really great thing, a lot of great feedback, high interest. So I'm really grateful that we can offer this to our students because a lot of schools don't have wheels. And so they're limited to just the hand building. So I'm really excited about this.
And I just want to add real quick, we visited Mason High School on our PD day a couple of weeks ago to check out their ceramics program because of course they have a huge ceramics program. And they also said that their program, their ceramics program is the most popular. Like it is just hot right now. Students love ceramics. So we were able to take a lot of her tips and tricks for how do we take just the six wheels and get as many kids on those wheels as possible because they want to do it and they're excited about it. So we're lucky to offer it, but we do feel very tight on space.
It's a little, it's a little close. You know, we we definitely, I'm amazed every time at what they can do when you give them the resources. So it's just really great to see them. Sometimes they get really, really frustrated, but I think that that's a really valuable lesson for our kids. They need to learn how to push through failures. I actually, this week, actually, they have a fail day. They have to go in there, they have to get started and they have to push the clay to until it completely crumbles. That's their assignment. So they look at me like I'm a crazy person, but it's it's very valuable and I can't stress that enough. So I'm really grateful to be able to give this to our kids.
And it's and the cool thing with ceramics, too, is it's not always the kids you expect because it's not just the academic kids that can sometimes kids that are good at everything get on the wheel and they just are so frustrated because it's not natural to them and they can't just pick it up like they can everything else. And then there are other kids that tend to struggle a lot in school and they can get on that thing and just take off. And all of a sudden, they're the one that, you know, the other kids are asking, how'd you do that? What'd you do there? So it's a fun thing to offer in the arts, something for everybody. And it's not just the select kids that always do well. And that's that's really fun to see in all the art classes so that we get a lot of diversity and kids that that get to succeed that, you know, don't know these elsewhere. Yes, I'm sorry we went over.
All right. Nice job, Mrs. Lawson, Mrs. Baker. That was that was exciting.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Beck, you're up with the winter athletics update. That's a hard one to follow, by the way.
Yeah. That was not good for me. That was really cool to celebrate all those different different achievements in our art classes. So we're going to spend a couple of minutes now talking about the athletic achievements from our winter season. And just kind of to start, in summary, it was it was another phenomenal season for our winter sports. You'll see some of the successes throughout this presentation, but really, really proud of our athletes, our coaches and our families for the for their accomplishments. So just as a recap, I know it's a seasonal recap, but this is the mission statement of the Ross Athletic Department. And I, you know, I think we continue to strive to do this. I don't think it's something that we achieve with perfection each day, but it's definitely our goal to accomplish this mission of providing learning opportunities for student athletes across all ages and through all sports. So that is what we are chasing on a day-to-day basis within our department. So just a kind of more of a concrete review of what the winter looked like. I gave the two-year comparison just because I think it gives a little bit more perspective on where our programs are. So boys' basketball tied for third place. Last year tied for second. It was crazy. It came down to the last game. We had a chance to go from first to third because two teams tied for first. So we got third place there. If we would have beat Tallawanna that last game, we would have jumped two spots. Girls' basketball finished fifth in the league. Boys bowling finished second in the league and then girls bowling finished second in the league as well. The bowling program had a really strong year, strong push for league titles in both boys and girls. Just came up a couple pins short in that pursuit. So good year for those four programs. And although I show this in a two-year perspective, I I don't think that these places necessarily tell the story of where our programs are. I think our our programs, you know, are are much more than wins and losses. And there's a lot more to the story of a win and a loss than just, you know, these these finishes. So just moving forward to boys' swimming, first time in school history, we won the league title there. There's a little bit of an asterisk that we kind of won it last year. And then they took it away from us because we used the wrong cap after the race, which I'm still not sure how that cost us a league title. But I get to say that we were the league title or league champs for the first time in school history. So that was a really great accomplishment for our swimming program. Girls got second place. And then wrestling got second place in the SWAC championship that was hosted at Harrison High School this year. And you'll see some more individual accolades here in a second. But I think what's really unique about those sports on that on that slide are individual sports are so unique as to what a championship looks like and what it takes to win a league title. But, you know, for example, the swimming, there's a diving division. We don't offer, we, well, we offer it, we just don't have any divers. So when you go to the league meet, forty points is guaranteed to any team if you just jump off the diving board. So if you have divers, you gain an edge of forty points. So we have to figure out a way to have a cannonball competition maybe next year to to get those free forty points. And I don't know, you know, I was talking to Coach Cummins, maybe we can have our offensive lineman really have the have the diving competition next year just to make sure we get some points. So and I believe this year we only had one school that had any divers at all. So to win a league title against that adversity is a tremendous reflection of what our swim program achieved this year. So this is where we stand in the SWAC All Sports Trophy going into the spring season. We are in first place by three points, which is again, a tremendous reflection of what we've done in the fall and winter. You see, we lost the winner by one and a half points to Tallawanna. Tallawanna historically is the spring, their spring is their best season over the past five, six years of of performances. So it should be an exciting finish to the SWAC All Sports Trophy. And just as a reminder, with this being our last year in the SWAC, you know, I know our our kids are are committed to to doing everything they can to to taking that All Sports Trophy. So it's an exciting spring to go into, looking at that board and knowing how tight it is between us, Harrison and Tallawanna there. Some postseason highlights. We had a ton to celebrate in the individual sports you'll see here. So we had Connor Ray advanced to the district championship as an individual bowler. All of these sports, you can do it as an individual or you can do it as a team. Our girls bowling team advanced as a team for the second consecutive year. This year, we were in Division One, and I know we talked about that in the fall, the divisional disparity. But we were Division One in all of these sports this year, which heightens the heightens the competition just a hair for us. So to to do that as a team again is a tremendous accomplishment for Coach Robertson, his staff, as well as the the bowlers on that team. Boys' swimming, we had state qualifiers from our relay team in the two-hundred-yard medley. You see the four individuals there, Cooper Burt, Connor Bennett, Luke Minnery and Connor Norton. All four of those individuals return next year. So that's an exciting thing to look at as far as long-term success. Knowing that everybody returns. And then sophomore Cooper Burt was a state qualifier in two events as an individual on top of qualifying as a relay member. And I went up to the state championship. It was in Canton, Ohio. And just to see Cooper go through three events. I mean, I can't, I was out of breath watching him. So and he he finished sixth in the hundred-yard backstroke, eighteenth in the hundred-yard butterfly, and then our relay team finished fifteenth. And when you're talking sixth to first, you're talking a second, maybe two. So it's not like the margin is that big. In in particular, to Cooper's backstroke competition, every single person that finished ahead of him and every single person in all lanes in his championship heat were all seniors. So it was it was really kind of cool. Somebody, a member from the media was walking past and I I heard him say, well, that means Cooper Burt is the heir to the throne. And I'm like, well, hold on, Cooper, like that, you're not entitled to that. Like, we got to keep working hard. Like, don't just assume that we're going to, you know, quit competing. So but it was cool that other people recognized that he was the only sophomore in that heat of eight qualifiers. So great success for our boys' swimming team. So great success for our boys' swimming team. The girls' swimming team had great success as well. Annabelle Smith qualified in two events. And then we had a relay team qualify for districts. Districts were held at Miami University, packed house, humidity is incredibly high. There's not a whole lot of room to sit, but it's an awesome experience for our kids in essentially what is a sold-out auditorium. So really exciting to see the success that our swim program has had over the past couple of years. And huge credit goes out to Coach Stewart and his staff for what they've built. Wrestling just finished yesterday, in fact. And for the first time in school history, we had two, two girls qualify for the state wrestling meet. This is the first year that OHSA has had girls' wrestling under their sports. So Audrey Garcia and Riley Miller were qualifiers for the state tournament there. Audrey finished seventh in the entire weight class for the state of Ohio. And then we had nine boys advance to the districts. And then Jordan Miller qualified as an individual for the state championship as well. He lost his first match and then won his second match on Friday, which guaranteed him another match on Saturday. He lost that one in a, I can't remember the final score or what the outcome of that was other than I knew he'd lost it, but I can't remember. It was a close match. Jordan is a senior, Riley is a senior. So a lot of good things happening within our individual sports. But the cool part about those sports is although they do have the individual element, there is a team camaraderie amongst those. So the state wrestling championship is a great example of that. That's at the Schottenstein Center, and it is packed. Teams travel to go support their peers. Communities travel very similar to what you'd expect for, you know, maybe a football or basketball game. I mean, to sell out the Schottenstein Center, it's no small arena. So really cool atmosphere for our swimmers and wrestlers in those state environments. A couple individual accolades we'll go through here. Cooper Burt was the boys' swimmer of the year for the Southwest Ohio Conference. As a sophomore, an incredible accomplishment. Looking forward to seeing his progress over the next couple of years. Joe Stewart won the boys' swimming coach of the year. Should have won it last year. We lost that too because of a cap malfunction. And it wasn't even a malfunction, it just had the wrong logo on it. So congratulations to Coach Stewart and his, his staff again on this accomplishment. Middle school, we'll look at, again, these are more, again, outcomes-driven, but there's so much more to the story than that. Seventh grade boys finished fifth in basketball. The eighth grade boys finished tied for second. Seventh grade girls, third. Eighth grade girls tied for first. They had an undefeated campaign until the last game of the year. So 15-0 going into the last game of the year, which then created the tie with Edgewood for that league title in the eighth grade girls' division. And then wrestling had a come-from-behind performance in the SWAC middle school meet to get second place. Tons of great stuff as far as outcomes, but I think, as I said at the beginning of this, there's so much more to what we're doing than just the wins and losses, and we'll talk about that here in just a second. For the analytics side of things here, for metrics, I guess. Winter high school, we were 19 fewer athletes, which is about 13% drop from the previous year. And then 21 fewer at the middle school, which equates to about 21%. But while we're giving the numbers, I feel like this is the one that I want to spend more time talking about, the 3.38 GPA. That is phenomenal when you're talking hundreds of student athletes and the demands that we put on our kids, the different ways they're pulled to be able to take care of business in the classroom as well as on the court, as well as on the field, is a tremendous testament to who they are, but also the strength of our athletic department and the great things that people are doing to afford our kids these opportunities. So kudos to our kids for just kicking butt both on and off the court. The student athlete leadership team continues to be a huge, huge part of what we do here in the athletic department. One of my favorite things to be a part of. Again, just numbers-wise, we're just over 80 students. We meet twice a month during extended Ram Bell. Recently, these are just kind of recent events that we've done. We participated in our new league's student leadership conference, which was held at the Nutter Center at Wright State. We had two phenomenal keynote speakers, Ryan Hawke, who is the brother of, and I hate that I have to introduce him as the brother, but this will put more perspective as to who he is. He's the brother of Ohio State football great, A.J. Hawke. He runs one of the best leadership podcasts, in my opinion, in the industry. There's a lot of them that are, eh, his is phenomenal. He gave an unbelievable keynote speech. And then the former commissioner of the Ohio High School Athletic Association was also a keynote speaker, Jerry Snodgrass. He's a, he's a mentor of mine and just comes with so much insight as to what it takes to, to be a leader through various times of uncertainty, adversity, and all those different things that are thrown at you in today's society. The last three bullets here, I just wanted to touch base on. If you remember, at the November presentation, I talked about an initiative we were taking in Salt, which was the Champions Challenge. This was our, our way of trying to get our student athletes to value community service, value supporting their peers, take care of interscholastic, the academic piece. And so what we did was we awarded points for community service hours that our students were doing anyways. We knew that they were engaged with our community. We knew that they were attending events, but I also wanted it to be a little bit competitive because we're talking about athletes. So these numbers are just since December, since we started this program. So our 80-some students, while being multi-sport athletes or athletes of one sport even, have given over 140 community service hours. They've attended over 230 home sporting contests, and they've attended over 80 away contests. And those are the ones that have just filled out the Google form. I am confident that we have kids who have forgotten to fill out the Google form. And then here in a couple of weeks, when I say we're approaching the deadline for the state dinner, championship dinner, I'm sure that everybody will remember to put those in. But if you look at those as far as what our kids are doing, you know, we've seen their academic success with a 3.38 GPA. We've seen their athletic success with our All Sports Trophy and how that stands. These three metrics right here show me that our kids are incredibly selfless and are committed to doing whatever they can to make this place, you know, a better, better environment for everybody. So I love those three lines. When I was kind of crunching those numbers, I thought 140 seemed low, but then when I started looking at our makeup, the majority of our Salt kids are multi-sport kids. And on top of being multi-sport kids, they're also involved in DECA. We had a couple student athletes advance to the national DECA competition here this weekend. So our kids are just getting pulled so much. To do all of this, I think, is a tremendous testament to, again, the type of people that we have in our athletic department. Couple special recognitions. I apologize, I'm gonna run over. Mickey Guyer, a couple weekends ago, was a recipient of the Dale E. Kramer Friends of Athletics Award. Was an awesome recognition. We had a luncheon before the district basketball games. The credentials or qualifications for that award are you have to provide over 25 years of service to a high school athletic department or a school athletic department. Mickey would, I hope she doesn't watch this tape, but I believe she is at 33 years of service. Mickey, if you don't know her, I don't know anybody in Ross that doesn't know Mickey, but if you don't know Mickey's background, she has been everything in this district. She's been an assistant athletic director. She's been an interim athletic director. She's been a ticket taker. She's an official. She's a substitute teacher. She was an in-school suspension monitor. She just does everything you could ask and then some for all of our kids. And it was an awesome, awesome recognition to, to see Mickey receive that. And she doesn't ask a thing of anybody. She just does it because she loves our kids, loves the community. So I was, it was a great experience for me to see Mickey receive some recognition and appreciation for her work. The next one is Jerry Boland. And again, if you follow, follow the Ross Athletic Department on Twitter, you saw this one. This was a really cool award. And again, similar to Mickey, she's not gonna be happy that this is in a presentation. Jerry was a recipient, one of two recipients in the entire state for the Sportsmanship Ethics and Integrity Award. That is awarded by the OHSA, and it comes from peer nominations and nothing more. So it wasn't anything that, you know, her assistants did. This is peers around the state have recognized what Jerry Boland does for our tennis program. And again, notice, none of those descriptors say winning. She's, she's just a first-class person. She values what it means to be an interscholastic coach. And we couldn't be more fortunate to have Jerry and her staff as a part of our athletic department. So that was up in Cleveland, which timed up well with the state swim meet. So it was an exciting weekend for Ross Athletics, but again, just congratulations to Jerry. There was a picture of her and her staff with this, this gentleman, but this, this award is Jerry's. And she would, she would be very quick to say it's her entire staff, but she's the leader of it and she deserves it. So final list, just, and this list could be a lot more extensive, but I just made it a little bit more broad. Again, thanks to Megan. She's our athletic secretary. She just absolutely rocks it. She's the best, especially with everything right now with our participation fees and things like that. She handles almost that entirely, or that almost entirely. Our event workers and volunteers, we would not be able to do what we do without the help of everybody. Huge shout out to our youth organizations. As we talk about the K-12 model that we'd like to have here, our, our programs are only as good as their feeders, and we have some of the best in the area without question. Whether it's RBA for basketball, youth wrestling, our youth swimming program that is now up and coming. We, we've, we've got youth cheer. I mean, we've got, we've got feeders that produce the success that we have right now. And there's, there's a ton of thanks that go out to all those people involved. Parents, again, couldn't be possible without all of them. Coaches, athletic trainers. And then student athletes, obviously, they deserve a tremendous amount of gratitude from myself and I think the entire community for how they represent this great place. So Dr. Conkle, I think I did it in 14 minutes.
That was awesome. Well done.
Absolutely.
So our league is twos, the five in our division will be us, Enroe, Edgewood, Franklin, and Melbrook. And then the other division, and I always forget one out of the seven just because, not intentionally, Brookville, Carlyle, Eaton, Valley View, Oakwood, Madison, Wayton. There's seven. It's a twelve total on the league. And our division is five, the other division is seven.
Is that it?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Beck. Can we have a motion? We're gonna go to executive session. What's the reason, Mrs. Logan?
The reason is to enter into executive session to...
Compensation?
Compensation of employees. See, appointment and employment and compensation of a public employee.
Thank you. Can we have a motion for that, please? Can we have a first?
Motion.
Mr. Chanel, can we have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Hayes, and that's with no action to follow, correct? Could you please call a roll?
Mr. Chanel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfeldter?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Van Leekel?
Yes.